And welcome, everybody, to the 12 o'clock show with Mayor Joe. And my favorite topic that I like to talk about, well, I got a couple of them, but this one especially, education, like to welcome our continued guest, Michelle Newman, State Board of Education. I assume you actually still have things to do, or they've taken all the powers. No, we'll get to that in a few minutes. There's been a lot of changes with what's gone on with the Ohio Department of Education. For those of you that have been paying attention, the Governor's Office made a change and the House and the Senate, they went ahead with it. They basically removes the, what used to be, I guess you could say, the Superintendent of Schools from the Ohio Department of Education, and now that's something that directly reports to the Governor's Office that, in my opinion, might make this a little bit more political than it used to be. But that still leaves all of the other responsibilities and duties to the Ohio School Board in itself. And so for you, now that everything's kind of changed over, and it's been a little bit of time, and for those of you that might remember, our very own Superintendent that we had a number of years ago, Steve Dakin is the guy that found his way into this particular role. So he's somebody that we all know here in Reynoldsburg, because he was the Superintendent preceding the strike in 2014. And so who knows what he's going to do at the state level? But for you, what's changed from your point of view, just like boots on the ground, just right up, right off the get go?
Yeah, so there's been some pretty substantial changes in both responsibility and what staffing looks like. So the State Board of Education actually still does have a state Superintendent who we hired. That is Paul Kraft, who started the job, I think, in early January, right? End of December, beginning of January. So Paul Kraft is our new Superintendent of Public Instruction, but then Steve Dakin is the head of the Department of Education workforce. And so right now, it is a little unclear what it's going to look like and what Mr. Kraft will be handling versus what Steve is going to be handling. And so we're kind of still seeing how that's going to shake out. But for us, the roles and responsibilities of the Board have changed so drastically that we went from meeting two days, once a month, to probably about three to four hours once a month right now. The responsibilities of the Board have been so far removed that now the only issues that we're dealing with are teacher licensure, territory transfers, and there is one other thing that we're handling too that is escaping me at the moment. But all three of those are exceptionally important things. But I think one of the future things we're going to talk about here is what funding and staffing looks like, and if we really will have the ample time and resources to give to those things what it deserves. But so much of the policy work, the discussion around curriculum that we had, all the different changes in education, we're hearing a lot of talk about literacy right now, both reading and math, that is all off the table of the State Board right now. And so we've only had a couple of meetings with this change in place, but the time that we're spending talking about important issues has radically decreased.
It's got to be somewhat frustrating, given the fact of what you got into this particular position for, what other members of the Board got in the position for, because you would think that you would be making some of those things. I mean, we've been on before, and we've talked about some of these big issues, what does testing look like at the K-12 level? What does, you know, what do we do and talk about when it comes to curriculum? Because obviously, there's a lot of controversial things out there about what is and is not taught in, you know, us Ohio schools in general. And so now, all of a sudden, that is gone. And so I think the initial intent, a lot of times, is, was saying that we're going to go ahead and take the politics out of it, because people were concerned that what kids were, we're not learning in schools. But the reality is, now it's even more political, because depending on what the Governor believes is going to be determined on whatever, you know, and if it, whether it's Steve Dakin or somebody else, those things are going to be there. So, you know, we did, you kind of mentioned it, the rumors of the financial thing. So the rumor that I've heard on my side is that you guys might actually become on our side of town. There's some open space at the Department of Agriculture just down the road, and that was something that was there. You know, we don't know for sure. This is one of those things that, hey, we know we have, they have open space there, but nothing specific. And then I saw an article in the Dispatch that talked about the State Board of Education building being up for sale, or their lease was running, or whatever the case may be. So do you have any information on that, or you're still kind of waiting to see?
I do have a little bit of an update, so there's some answers and still some gray area. So when Mr. Kraft started as State Superintendent, I think he'd only been on the job for a couple of days when he got a call from the Department of Administrative Services saying, hey, we're going to be moving you and your staff out to a building in Reynoldsburg. And don't get me wrong, we love Reynoldsburg, we do. But what that really meant was taking a body that is essential to decision-making in education and removing them physically from the rest of the decision-makers in education, right? And we all know that that physical space of being able to be in the room, literally, and have those discussions with folks who are now taking on the larger responsibilities is incredibly important. And so the Board, actually, we unanimously passed a resolution at our State Board meeting saying, we do not want this move to go forward. Again, no fault to Reynoldsburg. The building is beautiful.
You'd like our parking.
That's what we heard. That was the one upside, right? The parking was fabulous. And I drove by the building on the way here. Gorgeous space. But for us, it was really that, it was, it felt like a statement of saying, you don't belong here anymore, right? And I have to hand it to Mr. Kraft, and he stood, because our resolution was pretty strongly worded, and someone on the Board said, is this a little bit too strong? And he said, no, I'm fully comfortable with it. And so we really appreciated that from our new Superintendent. I did see a Dispatch article that came up in the past couple of days, I think, that it looks like they have already secured another residence for the building in Reynoldsburg. There was also a legal question that, in the state statute about the State Board of Education, it says that the State Board should be located in the center of government, which is defined as Columbus. And so they actually did cite that with the legal concerns, they were looking now for additional space. So I think they're still looking to move us somewhere, which, for me, is a little bit of a surprise, because about a year and a half, two years ago, we actually received a presentation at one of our State Board meetings about how there was so much space available in that building. And so I think it really is, I'm curious to get some answers about why they are looking to relocate the State Board and its staff out of that building, when previously, there was plenty of room that was there. And so to me, it feels a bit like a statement, but we'll see what moves forward on that.
I'm sure you'll get the clear, concise answer to those questions.
I'm guessing no, but thank you for your, your rosy outlook on it.
Well, you know, we're sad that you won't be out here, just because of the fact that it's a relatively quick, you know, drive for us and things like that. And they are nice facilities, and hopefully with everything, and restaurants going in across the other side, that'll be a good thing. So take all of those things away. You know, you mentioned three things. One of them, you can't remember, so we're not going to talk about that. The other two are kind of interesting. So when you say teacher licensure, I assume this is, teacher does something that teacher should not do?
Yes.
Or is accused of such things, and then it's up to you guys to figure out where that kind of goes from. And then the other one you mentioned, which actually is really interesting to Reynoldsburg, is when people ask for the reallocation of where the borders are for everything. Talk a little bit about those two things.
Yeah, so the teacher licensure piece is actually huge. There is a lot of work that can be done in this area for a variety of reasons. One is, we all know we're in a teacher shortage in the state of Ohio, where it's, I would say, many would argue, we're already in a full-on crisis of hiring and retaining teachers. So one of the things that we need to be doing right now is making that process friendlier. We need to be able to make sure that people know how to get their correct licenses, to be able to go into the classrooms that they need to go into, that there's better reciprocation when people are moving states to be able to come in and be able to get their license in a quick and efficient manner. We want to make sure that that process is seamless, that people understand it. So that's one piece of it. But we also know there are discipline issues that happen when people break rules. That process, right now, can be exceptionally time cumbersome, and we have seen some really awful things happen when that process drags on and on. And so there's real, serious work to be done on both sides of that, to be able to make sure that teachers can get licenses, and when there are disciplinary procedures, that that also moves at an expedient pace. And so those two things are exceptionally important, but with the budget shortfalls that we have at this point in time, are we going to be able to have the staffing to fully address and not only process what is currently there, but be able to keep forward momentum to do positive work? And so that's really one of the big concerns I have as a Board member, and the rest of the Board does as well, and the Superintendent. And so for us, that is where we would really like to be spending time and moving forward. And then the territory transfers piece is also huge. That is a process that can be cumbersome and lengthy. With all of the changes that we have coming to our area, we could start saying that more, and being able to give the time that that process requires is very important, because it means a lot to our communities when that happens. Tax dollars moves, it changes the face of neighborhoods, it changes the population densities of schools. It's an exceptionally important process and procedure, and so we need to make sure that we've got the right people there working on that.
Well, especially considering, you know, and I will give some credit where credit is due, there have been good strides in funding for schools, and there have been good pushes. I would love it if we would have more than a, let's hold our breath every two years and see if it continues. But the other part of it is, you know, you talk about these territorial changes, you know, is especially when you look at Licking County. And you look at how Licking County is going to grow because of Intel and because of everything else in the surrounding areas of that, you know, the concern that we would probably sit there and say, okay, our district's trying to purposely, like, offload land to not have to deal with the repercussions of the additional students, because the funding program is the way it is, and not every school district is funded fairly or equally, and not every school district has the resources to kind of compensate for that, whether it's, you know, our own additional property taxes or otherwise. And then the other part of it is, you know, again, everybody deserves a right to an education. It doesn't really, you know, it doesn't matter if you're in this street and go to this district or that street and go to the other district. Each district should be given the maximum amount of support from the state to do so. And that's going to be an issue, because we all see that the voucher bill that passed is exceedingly higher than what their original estimates were, which, of course, no one warned them that that was going to happen. So that's just one of those things in there. So other than, so for you, for what you're thinking about, from any goals that the Board has, I know in that, it's kind of a constrained thing. It's like before, you could talk about, hey, we're going to address testing, we're going to do that. Now you're kind of limited in this field, but are there things that you guys, in your early meetings, have talked about, and said, okay, take all the noise away, all the drama and everything else? These are things that we want to work on, so kind of like what you just talked about?
Yeah, and so those two goals that we had talked about were set out by Mr. Kraft when he came in as Superintendent, being able to do that. The other one, I think as tricky as it seems, is trying to build, repair, maintain, grow relationships in the State House. The fact is, the most policy that affects education gets made in the State House, and then now through the Governor's Office. And without those relationships and advocating on behalf of our public schools, we're not hearing that narrative, right? And so it is one of the important pieces that the State Board and our Superintendent will play, is being the boots on the ground, talking with our public schools, making sure that that voice is heard, because we all know that a lot of legislation comes through that is not in the best interest of our schools. It's very much a knee-jerk reaction to maybe one squeaky wheel, that's something that ends up overhauling a huge piece of policy that has an adverse effect on our public education. And so that is also another goal, is to make sure that that communication maintains. And so when we take our Superintendent and our staff and remove them from that space, it's really a detriment to our education policy as a whole. And so that's something we really want to keep working on, and the fact is, the majority of the people who are on the State Board are trying to advocate on behalf of public education. And, you know, we could have a whole other show here on the expansion of vouchers and what that looks like.
Entire series, an anthology.
We could, so if we want to schedule that, let's get on it. We could, we could take up a whole year on it, right? But I mean, for us, it's like, our public schools, those are the cornerstone of what democracy looks like. It's where democracy grows, it's where every kid gets a chance, and we have to continue advocating for that, and that's also a piece of the State Board work as well, for some.
Well, I appreciate it. We did get one question that was submitted by Neil Whitman, who also, you know, and I was going to do this anyway, Neil, so I know you're watching. Neil Whitman's one of our Board members, longtime Board member, and he does, he got this idea that he was going to do a live Facebook show talking about school issues. I'm not sure where that idea came from, but he does it every Friday from four to five o'clock, and the first half an hour of it is kind of like live on Facebook, so people can ask questions and things. Because I think that's really one of the things, that's why we do this show, is we provide opportunities for anybody to ask questions. So Neil's going to do that, because the questions that might come from, to a school district are going to be different than what I hear. So his question to you is, who would have the standing legally to bring a court case against the reorganization of the State Board of Education, saying that it is unconstitutional?
It's a great question, Neil. I am happy to say that I am currently a plaintiff in a lawsuit against the state about the reorganization of the State Board of Education, but it's been a tricky road. So I initially entered into a lawsuit with several of my colleagues from the State Board of Education about the changes that were made to the State Board, and we were found to not have standing as State Board members. And I think that's based on Ohio Revised Code, that an elected person in a board can then not take that action. I'm not an attorney, but others could clarify on that. So the standing there was removed. But I was allowed to remain on the lawsuit, because I'm a parent with a child in public schools. And so that lawsuit is still pending, it is still out there. There, we are still waiting on information, it has not been closed, it has not been finalized. But at this point, what's important is it is the voices of parents, and being able to have that standing is very tricky, and it's, it's been disappointing to me to see, because the fact is, any voter who voted for someone in the State Board who had that representation removed, to me, would be someone who has standing, but I guess that's a tricky precedent. But I am a parent that now can no longer go to an elected State Board member and be able to ask about what's happening in education. My only voice is now voting for Governor every four years. And so there may be a point in time where additional plaintiffs are sought out, and I'll make sure I reach out to Neil on that one. But I am proud to stand with myself and three other parents and Board members, local Board members, who are still in that lawsuit with the state. So stay tuned, that is not done yet.
Imagine that, lawyers. All right. Any questions from the audience, anything like that? Well, I know you've got a lot of things to go on today, but you're welcome to stay as we kind of go over some other different information. So do you have another 10, 15 minutes?
Absolutely, I'm ready to hang out.
All right, so we've got a lot of fun things going on over the next couple of weeks. This is that time of the year where, you know, a lot of dreams are coming to fruition when it comes to development, and we're getting ready for street programs and all that other stuff. And a lot of this is going to be revealed to everybody at the State of the City. We started doing this in 2020, and it's going to be Thursday, February 15th, right here at City Hall, and it's going to start, doors are opening at 6:30, and I'll start probably about 7 o'clock. But what's going to be a little bit different this time around is, we decided that we're going to invite some of our local nonprofits into City Hall to show what they do. So Hart Food Pantry, the Reynoldsburg Education Foundation, and others are going to be invited. And so as people are coming in to watch all of this, they'll have an opportunity to see some, what some of these organizations do, and, I mean, obviously, they're going to ask for support, be it volunteers at the food pantry, or financial donations for certain things, or even just awareness for some of our local organizations. So we thought it would be good to highlight them, because really, this State of the City is a lot about partnerships. You know, we cannot do everything we want to do alone, and the more people involved, the better it is all the way around. So I invite everybody out there to come out on February 15th here at City Hall. We are going to broadcast it, how we're broadcasting it, I'll let you know as soon as we figure it out. So it'll either be like what we do with our city council meetings, or we're going to see if we can finagle and get it on Facebook, but we're just going to have to wait and see. We do have a couple of other cool things. The Board members do have their office hours, it's actually, today is office hours, so they've instituted this. So today, 5 o'clock, President Angela Abram and Board Member Amanda Young are going to be at the Graham Road Building, and they're going to be taking some questions from community members, if they have anything about anything to do with our schools. So that's going to be an opportunity there. And then obviously, I mentioned Neil Whitman with his Facebook Live show, he'll do his Board meetings or his kind of office hours on Fridays, but for that first half hour, it'll be online and live, so that'll be good. This past weekend, I had an opportunity to sit in with city council, they did their Board retreat, and it was at the far-off, adventuresome place of the main conference room just down the hall from here. So special thanks out to Molly Prasher, our Clerk of Council, for getting a couple of things together, you know, for everybody to kind of have a little bit of breakfast and coffee and kind of go over some things. So there were some pretty, pretty good conversations that council had. This was open to everybody in the minutes will be out there in the not-too-distant future, but they kind of came up with a list of things that they would like to do and see happen over the next couple of years for themselves. A lot of it had to do with making sure that our process is easier, to make sure that when residents come here for whatever purpose, they can get things done in a more efficient manner, which is always a good thing. Transparency is another one that they mentioned, to continue on. I mean, again, there probably aren't too many elected officials that take live questions every week, and here I am, and any questions?
No.
Okay. So.
You're not done yet.
I know, there's still, no, usually that's it, at the very end of the day, you know, before I say goodbye, are there any questions? And then, of course, there's always somebody that types and submits.
Of course.
Right after we go offline. But doing that, and then the last one, of course, is obviously development, you know, whether it's to have the nice things that we want, whether it be restaurants or entertainment options, but then also dealing with infrastructure and all of those types of things. One of those things that's going to come into play real quick is our code enforcement with a project called Engage Reynoldsburg. This is going to be what we, it's a program called See Click Fix, but we're calling it Engage Reynoldsburg, where it's an app on your phone, and if you're walking down the street and you see a pothole, or if you're walking down the street and there's a light, street light out.
Instant feedback.
Instant all the way, that you get it to who they need to, and then we can get that done. So we're about to hire about 20,000 more additional code enforcement officers, which will be great. Neighbors will be thrilled, I'm sure. But that's something that we can do, just because sometimes we don't see things. Even though our code enforcement is out, they may not see every little particular thing. And if we find out that a street light is out, you know, a day or two earlier before somebody else, then that just makes it easier for us to correct. So we've got that. We do have a couple of interesting things coming up. The first one is, a local organization is putting together a Meet the Candidate Night. It's on February 13th, that's a Tuesday night, it's Mardi Gras-ish, and they're going to have an event at the Lancaster, at 610 Lancaster Avenue, the Postal Workers Union Hall. And it's going to start at 6 o'clock, and it's going to be kind of a Mardi Gras kickoff, so if you want to participate and have food, they're going to, you know, have a food there from a local restaurant, I think it's going to be, Cajun Island is going to be providing some food there. And then about 6:45, we're going to shift into a Meet the Candidate Night type of thing. So I'm going to be your local emcee, and I'm going to talk to three candidates for the Ohio State House that'll be there on that night. And then I'm also going to move after that into the role of the Franklin County Prosecutor's Office. So there are three candidates working for their primary that is in March. And for us here in Reynoldsburg, it's, it's very interesting, because obviously, you've seen the media, and we've seen an increase in car thefts by young people all the way throughout central Ohio. And a lot of people are kind of like getting frustrated about what's going on, why is the Prosecutor's Office not doing this, or why are they doing that, and things of that nature? Well, this is going to be the opportunity for Reynoldsburg and anybody who's watching to actually come out and see what they have to say. They are going to take some questions. Basically, community members can write down their questions, and then we'll go through and pick out the questions that we are going to get them to answer at that night. So it's going to be a good thing. It's always good just to hear what they have to say and what the House Representatives have to say as well. So again, that is going to be February 13th, starting at 6 o'clock. You don't have to buy a ticket unless you want food, but if you just want to come up and see what those candidates have to say, that is open to the public for everybody. So we're looking forward to that. We also have a flood grant update. So Reynoldsburg has had some flooding issues over the years. And so a couple of years ago, when there was really bad flooding, we worked and engaged with FEMA and the Ohio EPA to come up with some potential solutions. So we finally have our first kind of big town hall meeting. We had to go through a grant process, and we had to go through the federal government, and then dotting i's and crossing t's with lawyers and things like that, so there was a lot of things going on. So our town hall is going to be February 21st at the Senior Center. The time is going to be determined, but it's probably going to be like a six to eight-ish time. But everyone in the community is invited. If you live in an area that has experienced flooding, obviously, we really want you to be there, but you're going to see a lot more advertisements over the next couple of days. This is going to be kind of a combination feedback for the company that's going to be coming in to do these evaluations, but then it's also going to be laying out the process of what everybody's going to see. So if you see somebody walking from, I would say, walking from City Hall in, in French Run, rocking on Black Lake Creek, all the way down to basically pass, you know, by the Kroger and by the Menards, that type of thing, if you see some people in like hip waders and things like that, that's probably the crew that's doing it. So they're actually in the water surveying all of this stuff right now. They've already gone from here to the other side of Black Lake Park. So they've done a lot of that, so they're getting a lot of data and things of that nature. So for those residents that are in Brighter Cliff, those residents that are in other parts of Reynoldsburg, trust me, we're going to advertise this, you're going to see it everywhere. Any questions on that one?
We have a question about the Engage Reynoldsburg app.
Of course.
It wants to know if the Engage Reynoldsburg app will have the capability to list items already submitted by others to avoid massive duplication?
It will probably have something on there where it kind of just says, this one item has been submitted as long as it's still the same thing. Like, if you're at a point and there's a street light out and a pothole, then you can only report on one of them, maybe the other one's taken care of. But we got about, I think, right now, what they're doing is they're just verifying with the app stores that they're okay with everything for their agreement, so we got about two, maybe three weeks to go before that stuff goes all live.
So you've got a question?
I know. That's one. Beyond that, we've got some other kind of cool things going on. I am not artistic in any way, shape, and form, but our Parks and Recreation Program does a really good job. It's fused glass.
It's never too late, you become artistic from that point forward.
Yeah, I, it's dangerous, I don't want to, I don't want anybody to get harmed.
Maybe don't start with glass.
Yeah, glass would probably, yeah. Just give me mittens and I'll be fine. But that's going to be February 1st through the 29th, it's going to be a series of classes from 6:30 to 8:30 at our Senior Center, so. It's a lot of fun, it's open for various ages, and I think we only have about this week as the last week for spring sports registration. I realize it's January and everybody is still kind of cold and gray overcast and all of that, but this stuff is going to kick off pretty quick here for spring soccer, baseball, softball, our superheroes program, all of that fun stuff. We also have our Bryce Park, so we put out, this is a joint deal between the City of Columbus and Reynoldsburg, we're going to be developing what, right now, looks like a stormwater facility, and we're actually developing into a brand-new park. It's going to be right across the street from where our new library is being constructed, and it's going to have pathways and all of that, so it's been sent out. The bid opening is next week on Friday, so we're going to figure out exactly what it is. And then, once that happens, we're going to have a kind of a groundbreaking at some point in time with the City of Columbus. It'll be their furthest eastern park and our furthest western to kind of add into it. We are also still collecting letters for people who want to be on our planning and zoning board, if you're interested in all of those fun things, where you can kind of be the gatekeeper to make sure that what's being submitted to the city meets all the requirements that we have. It's a great opportunity, we have some spots there for you to send your cover letter, basically saying why you want to do it, as well as your resume to Eric Meyer, the Reynoldsburg Development Director, so that'll be good. We got a lot of calls about this, I don't know about where you're at, but litter cleanup. I don't litter, my kids don't litter, I don't really ever see anybody litter for the most part.
But then it just shows up.
It does. And so there's some areas that are out there. So we created an Adopt a Road program a couple of years ago, and so those areas are open right now, so when it gets a little bit warmer out, if you're interested, we actually will go ahead and do that, and we'll actually have signs out there kind of for your group or even your family, if you just want to do it. All you have to do is five times a year, that's it. Five times a year, go out and clean up some litter, and that'll be a great opportunity. So if you're interested, again, reach out to us here at the city. And any questions?
Yes, this is a follow-up from the Engage Reynoldsburg. It says, will there be statistics provided on turnaround time, areas of concern, planning to increase transparency?
Yeah, and we'll have all of that information out there. I mean, we've been talking about code enforcement since I've got here, and again, some things are going to be a lot quicker than others. Potholes may take a little bit more time, streetlights probably a little bit faster, unless somebody actually ran through a streetlight, in which case, no, that'll take a little bit of time. But you can actually have it tracked when you do it, so if you submit it, you can go back and see where it's at in the process until it gets to its completion date. gets to its completion date. And we'll probably do something like a quarterly update, just to let everybody know where those things come from. We know that I have, there's my code enforcer right there, and we know that person's going to be out in force. So next week kicks off our African-American History Month celebration, and we are starting off with, because it's schools, our Superintendent, Reynoldsburg City Schools Superintendent Dr. Tracy Reed will be joining us here live in studio, and we're going to talk to her about how her first year's been. She got here about a year ago, give or take. It's always eventful in Reynoldsburg City Schools. So if you have questions, please make sure you send those to Jessica. We'll have that out there, and make sure we get those questions out there all the way across. So it's always going to be a good time with that one. And with that, any, if there are any other last second questions?
Got one more.
See, there we go.
Put the call out. You were mentioning, talking about litter and requesting for you to look behind businesses. There's a lot of litter behind businesses. What is being done about that?